Back it too hard is need to cross the rule.
We're good at all.
Okay. You can start. Follow us being in order, let the record show that all council members are present except for Jacobson will begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Some additions to the agenda, one of the things already in there. Number nine is the audit engagement. Letter. And number ten is um. Request for quotes on the HVAC. Over at the senior center, do we have any other additions to the agenda?
Yeah, this under uh age, that's actually the public here in one of the so actually nine. And then ten would be specifically. I have no point there.
Okay. Um Jacobson's here. Regret. Previous situation, we're at. Just starting the agenda, I don't know. See, Brown's on the agenda. The it's in there, the audit. Letter you probably noticed.
Good.
So but that will be number nine and then number ten. Will be a request for quotes. For the HVAC, the senior center. That's right there now.
Good.
Are there any other additions? Not as our motion to approve.
Cool.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no motion carry. In your packet of the minutes of the regular meeting, November three twenty twenty five, are there any additions, corrections, or questions regarding those units? Hearing them, hearing them, those then stand approved as print, move on to the claims and there's the sheet with the ones that came in since last week.
Your list looks a little different because we did uh do a meeting on the sixteenth, so we had checks of that were not right. And so that first is actually a paid invoice report and uh payment approval report, which we usually run. Uh so a lot of those you don't usually see because there's payroll related items like the union dues and athlac and different things, but it includes the Gary service, the Mike's plumbing and heating, things that we go for our audit, I mean, we need to approve those, well, that one's already cut. And then the the uh payment approval report is what they're usually used to seeing, so that would be check dates of like eleven four through current and that first addition that we're okay. Right.
Alright, and do we want to uh omit the groundwork?
Well, it's uh. You can do that, the
It's still gonna happen.
Well, it's already high.
Yeah.
So. Um. What Myron is asking about is a a concern that Blake brought forward to me uh. I'll have one that uh the there's still a drainage issue in the basement. Um the drainage pipe along the perimeter of the wall, they haven't extended all the way to the corner. Yet hopefully uh as bid and designed in the and so water is still coming in kind of flowing eventually into that drainage channel, but it's still flowing across the floor, which is just gonna be back. So. Unfortunately, I didn't put two and two together there and they had just called and asked for a check when they were done and didn't even cross my mind frankly. They they got checked, they've been paid in fully and have any drainage job, so. Boy brought that up to me rightfully so and well. Weston, I think has already been talking with them, but hopefully we have. Uh we don't get the money.
The weapon is already
Yeah, right away.
And you don't know what the result was? It's very good conversation.
I I didn't talk to us today at all, actually, so um other than But you can, you you can, but it's like it's kind of a move.
Yeah, well, either either way, we're gonna
However, perhaps not, because as I was explaining to some of them before the meeting officially started. If I can get into the portal, which is down now for National Bank, I can issue a stop payment on the check from the portal directly. If they haven't cashed yet, we can figure this all out and we have some eat. You know, behind the discussions moving forward on completion of the project. It's a bigger company, they're out of the cities, uh they've been in town and doing other projects for years and years. I'm not expecting a problem, but but like I said, it is in the design spec, you know, that was signed in the So you could, you should evolve it, because if I can issue a stop payment, then that will, in effect.
We've got instructions to do it, and so.
Right, right.
Okay.
I like the motion.
Hey, was there a second? Sorry. Any further discussion, if not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no motion carry, do you have anything for notices and communications?
Do not.
Move on depending, anything there?
Yes, uh virtual public hearing. Um the city contingent will be here in this room tomorrow at three P M. Uh who is planning, I did post for that meeting, it's not a necessity to have a forum. It uh that's not a P U C requirement, it's just, you know, I didn't know who was planning on being here, so I figured I'd post for the meeting.
Right. Yeah, maybe.
Yeah. So I would say two forty-five, you know, we'll get logged on, I might be down to the wire because says in both as well, I'll be in Marshall presenting to the Senate uh. Right, right there, so. I might uh leave those in right, right, I don't know.
Are you gonna be here? Good luck. Yeah.
Yeah, I thought I was gonna have that discussion with you tomorrow, actually, because I have the script for presentation even and actually project, but you know, he liked. Tutorial here. Yeah, yeah, you've done this, because that was out one. You've done this part.
Yeah, just once, so.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's good to have that back. Um and then in person at M C C Auditorium, I am in tenth, which I believe is next Wednesday at five P M. And so that uh administrative project will be in town, P U C staff will be in town and um same exact format content of hearing. Uh. With each side does like a five minute, not even summary of where we're at. And and it's basically handed back to the administrative law judge and P U C staff. And they say, does anybody have any comments, you know, that attend the virtual hearing or attend the person hearing and then they kind of moderate from um we're more attendees than hosts, it's not gonna be like when where we did the the three or four meetings. Uh a few years ago or whatever. Excel will obviously be in the room virtually physically next weekend. They'll do a little presentation, a summary and uh let's take the questions. I'm not expecting, I I you sure you've all seen the full page ad that they had a couple weeks ago, I have a blast, you know, like crazy on Facebook. Sponsored app, I've seen like on my feed.
As is a other entity that is trying to stop rate increases. One time.
So yeah, I don't uh honestly, nobody knows what to expect, we've had a legal team check in today in the afternoon and these are very common for rate cases and other type of projects from the P U C, but never a contested case, well. Never, they've never had one like what we're trying to do, so everybody's territory, so. Comments, we had during comments at all, I've heard nothing here. The hearings, so it could be pretty quick. Public hearing. But. I polled for the one next week as well, just. And then um natural gas utility, see petition, I think it already state mothers and call, but petition was filed at the end of October for a sale to us for gas. If you lay to something I found is that the Department of Commerce had requested thirty day extension to the end of this week and while the P U C hasn't officially ruled on that request from the Department of Commerce, which the Department of Commerce is the legal arm of P U C based legal analysis and interpretation. The attorneys involved say it's just a formality that they've never got grabbed in that extension, so Department of Commerce should have a legal report to the P U C hopefully by the end of this week, because they filed for that extension about a month ago and P U C hasn't officially answered them, but the deadline that they requested to be at is this Friday, so. Stand simple there. Task we bring to that. Um. Wonder World, uh the city and Wonder World are presenting to the Senate Bonding Committee, the Capital Investment Committee tomorrow at one fifteen P M. That will be at S M S U, we were invited to this by the committee administrator for the Senate. Uh Capital Investment Committee and so it's us, it will, S M S U is doing their own bonding request and then we will be after that tour. And then the city of Pederton for their water and most water. And Storm Sewer Project and then they're on their way to old state of Minnesota, Minnback. And then they're off the Redwood Falls, so the Senate is taking more of a regional approach, you know, we'll come to your general vicinity and then you come to us rather than while the historic one is gone, city to city, so. We have never presented in front of the Senate this specific request before, so this is great, because then we will have been heard in committee by the House last year. Met the Capitol and then the Senate will be now familiar with the project as well.
So I'm just gonna do a stupid for the
Uh actually. Yeah, so I'll I'll do the kind of technical side, because the city, the way that this bill language is structured, the the city is actually filing the request and so the city would get the money and then we would have a long term lease agreement with the with Wonder, which is fairly common thing, like we say, there's provisions. Boilerplate language that Minnesota management budget has for those types of things. Statutorily nonprofits are eligible to receive bonding, not cash appropriations from the state general. Uh not responding dollars. But uh the feeding or future handle uh kind of put an end to that, so well, statutorily they're allowed, legally if they haven't been allowed for much so. This was the most efficient and probable way to get bonding dollars from states.
We have an amount, what amount do we
The building would last year was three million, we're reducing that to one million, because one, we did that last year, the project estimate was still three point five million and not two point one. And also the funding commitments that have come in in the past year, we don't need that three million. They like a fifty fifty match, so what we're presenting is one million dollar uh request and we are already able to show that we care. We have the one they're embraced, which is the truth, so.
Oh, time frame.
Oh, the legislature convenes in February, early February uh. May is when they go and so it's it's
I know.
Right, what would Yeah, there would, there's some politicking that's gonna have to I think we will know certainly by March or April what the political climate is and the chance for a bonding bill. Right now, I would say slim to none. You would probably agree.
I agree there.
Uh the forecast comes out on Thursday, that is the final forecast before session starts and so that'll be kind of the um game plan, if you will, of how much money they have or don't have to to spend. And keep in mind, it's also in the election year.
Traditionally. Traditionally, this would, I mean, by the old days, like a decade ago and older, would be the bonding year, but there's a pattern that's emerged last decade, I say, I would guess that uh doesn't happen.
The governor not really in a press release, but just to the House and Senate's capital investment leadership stated that basically things in the ground, uh so infrastructure, roads, bridges, that would be number two, so pipes, roads and bridges and then like child human services things, which daycare is lumped into there, so. Now the governor, of course, doesn't he signed the bonding bill at the end of it, but there's not a whole lot of negotiating power there. His main priority is kind of in our wheelhouse, so it's positive, right?
And with the ruling fiscal cliff after the next biennium, it's waiting on, I think, too.
Uh also, any questions on the Senate?
Well, I guess the only comment that I would have is it'd be nice to make it very oh, now this is a slim to none thing. But it doesn't hinder other fundraising options in the meantime. Oh, we're, yes, I know what you mean, slam dunk.
Yeah, it's like, oh, you know.
For that message last year. And uh honestly, I think it's less of a chance this year than it was last year, and so I am actually slated to speak to the Wonder World Board next Monday, they moved their meeting, because their meeting's possibly the first or Monday, and so it never works for me, uh but they're moving it because they wanna kind of just hear a general update of what the city has going on and things, so. To that end, tomorrow at the county board uh is the three recommendations for motion that came from the, what was it, Goanti?
Uh well.
Popular guy. The three motions that came out of the E D A meeting in November, which were to amend the motion made in October of last year for the hundred thousand from the E D A, that would be the forgivable. And there was some question from oil commissioners on whether that was tied to a full funding project that a specified amount, which at the time was three point five million dollars, which as I explained is no longer the case, and so uh there was a desire to amend that motion to just say fully funded with no specific funding trigger to it, uh fundraising amount, it'd still be the last dollar and not at three point five million. A second motion would be to authorize an additional one hundred thousand. What I think that motion will end up being is a transfer from the E D A, county E D A operational to E D left revolving loan. And that will also be structured as forgivable fifteen years. And so that would make the total forgivable portion for the county to Wonder World at two hundred thousand. And then the third motion tomorrow slated for the board agenda is a recommendation from the E D A to transfer three hundred thousand dollars from uh to be determined the count, the county to the revolving loan fund of the E D A to be used for a general economic development uh venture, basically, a possibility. Then it would be a subsequent motion at a later meeting to specify that three hundred thousand going to Wonder World. This would be payable portion and the terms that are on record right now as a recommendation are twenty-five year term. Deferred principal and interest for three years and four percent interest. And so that, that was a a huge win, in my opinion, we were expecting the four hundred additional total, three hundred payable. We were expecting a ten or fifteen year term and then had poured seven twenty-five, so that that significant increase cash flow in a up a great way. There, so and then interest rates about three below five, right? The beer was shown per the first children's finance, financial projection that cash flow is not great in the first few years, deferred for three years from a bit of dispersed amounts. It's hugely costly as well, so. I'll be attending that meeting as well tomorrow morning, as we've just seen and um two folks from Yeah.
Does that mean interest is not including for three years or can we trust?
Is not.
It's always not, okay.
I don't.
That's really positive, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. That's all I have under pending.
Okay, well, we have, we'll move on, then we do not have any unfinished business, so we're gonna move on to new business and we have the C King uh Legion Commander Brad King over here to chat with us about some of the neat stuff that's coming up next summer.
Take it away, go ahead.
What we have is remember a fallen traveling tomb. That consists of thirty-four towers. Fifty-five hundred names. Of everyone that was killed since nine eleven, over twenty years from Iraq, that's here. The Slaton American Legion has booked this to help celebrate the two fiftieth of the country next year. And also next year, a lot of people don't realize, and I asked them next year is also twenty-five years since nine eleven. And to have this display here in our community and our area a month before the twenty-fifth anniversary really means a lot, but. Um. Towers, ten foot tall, there's three banners on it. And along with the pictures there's their name, their rank, their unit, their hometown, when they were killed and how they were killed. And also there's an inset picture. It goes along with it, or their military picture showing a family or hobby or something like that. So I think we had the Vietnam War two years ago, everybody knows how well that went over. This year is going to be so much more emotional, because there's pictures to go with the names. And what we're doing, our fundraising, we've been doing fairly good already. We're looking to raise at least a minimum of thirty thousand dollars to help cover expenses to bring all this in here. Alright. And we're planning on setting up at the soccer fields. I worked out good last and we're good this year too, I'm still working with National Guard to see who we can get involved now to help with it too as well, bringing static displays and things like that, hopefully. I've not heard from the band yet, if I can get them involved or and things like that, so it's still in progress, because we know how the military sometimes works, it's three up and wait. So I guess what we're looking for is I'm looking to see if the city wants to be involved and help and bring this display in to help us out.
Fundraising goal of thirty thousand, you said?
Yes.
And you are at?
Roughly about half of that right now. Is where I'm at, is it's believe where we're at right now in the vein.
Hmm.
This has actually gone over pretty good, like Marshall Legion twenty-five hundred right off the bat, thirty-two hundred and twenty-two thousand. Monogram leads, uh fifteen hundred. Lot of five hundreds to help us out with this. It's been well received all the way around. And I believe we're gonna do it's been discussed already, we decided at our last meeting. We're actually gonna do the tower influence this time with this play. It's a way to recognize people, the businesses and organizations a little better.
Sure.
No different than all of us. I make their signs that they can display. That being a sponsor of the display in the towers. Or they can display their business or wherever, and that's the same thing too.
Do you have a tiered level, really, or?
Not yet. And I'm not sure what color words to use yet on it, because I know our highest one right now is twenty-five hundred.
Red, white and blue.
Well, that that'd be red, two or I'm saying like platinum, gold, silver.
Red, white and blue stars.
Okay.
Yeah, it's uh. See, I gotta figure out a way to have you become a family now, for any good ideas.
Then you could go up there or just go stripe stars and then you can go one, two, three.
Hope all kinds of ideas on how that do go on a different level.
What's your timeline, I mean, you're taking donations up to the day of the event type of thing, or do you have like a the
I would it's possible for that, because I don't have to, I don't have to do advertising, things like that, like we did last time to bring people in for our community. Because the same timeframe that the fair is next year is almost like coming for a second timeframe.
You've not. But we weren't asked either.
Yeah.
Whatever, any other questions? Reporting?
Well, from my perspective, I I don't think uh probably it would say in tonight, we had kind of talked about.
Yeah.
Um that's why I was about timeline of when you want to see how we join it a little bit and
We we could pledge to correct. We can pledge whatever, they could go make a pledge for the donation and then we could donate that like early next year, like
Yeah. Do that, so I don't see all my, I've talked to the guy on my list, you're waiting, so. But for virtually your protect the business from and check that.
And I think another neat thing that I know mentioned when I talked to you is that this being the twenty-fifth anniversary of nine eleven, that this uh um exhibit as its last stop after this in New York.
Yeah, you're in New York on your schedule in Mountain, but in New York, you're bringing frank or touring with this, you're displaying as a company that has This display is based in Long
But it's kind of a kind of a, it'd be kind of a big deal for the penultimate you know, filling of it.
Yeah, that's And then when I bucked away back to almost a year ago now, when I first reached the whole, I was walking a bit for the the morning weekend and get me like hey, three, five years since nine eleven, too. Be in the two fifty of the country, but a man from Afghanistan, it's the same worry for the same thing. We need, we need to make this the biggest airtime celebration that we can, because of the two fiftieth of the country.
Oh, yeah.
Along with twenty-five years since nine eleven. Somehow, some way.
Well, the two fifty discussion was already somewhat
Yeah, the county.
Kind of rethought, because there was there was a local year to government meeting when it was August.
I think so.
And they had said, how can we make, I think they land on we land on somewhere, you know, it's just incorporated into the into the fair, but those townships and county and cities and yeah, I think they'll they'll probably be open to that. So.
Yeah, I'm on air board here, it's on turn, turn of the tool. We didn't make it to the round. So just then you incorporate it into the fair. It's ideal, because the fairs are dry every year. It's ideal because the pairs are dry every year. And we had the Vietnam War two years ago. I think the town to most of them. But there was in a small island area and because of the. Type of display being here. And I think by this one here. That help. I'm hoping to give some of our younger guys that didn't serve over there for them two years with the Red Bull. Some type of closure at the same time, I see in their buddies picture and name memorialized that way at most banners.
All right, well, I think uh, I'd say we're gonna be. Looking at this, you know, the council, I imagine uh. I have to look through and see where where we get the money from and things like that and. Uh, looking back, thank you, Brad, though, very much for coming and. Especially going through the work and getting this organized and bringing it to town. I mean, it. It, I know it means a lot to the people who whom are touched by it, but I think it's. This is a pretty big deal for our community.
Yeah, that's. So.
Mm-hmm.
If we remember, which wasn't anything.
How long have you been in town for? Eleven, thirteen, fourteen.
Yeah, then both commanders for a while, and because some of them are set around March every year that comes to town. Cloud on that, it was. Right fifteen years we've been in town.
Please. The point is, I've been here for thirteen and I've seen the. Kind of. Glow up, if you will, of the um legion. It's been fun to watch. Legions are like they're around by local poster forever, but. Pretty tremendous things and kind of reairdrives of that organization.
We try to because we.
Not unnoticed.
We don't have a brick and mortar for visibility, we're in a community. So we do what we. Try and do what we can for visibility in the community. People have, there's a legion that don't, you know, you're welcome.
Yeah.
We're saying.
Mm-hmm.
You know, our chief, your meeting member of our soul. Such time, I appreciate it. Now shameless quarter next month, also Christmas of December twenty-one.
Yeah.
It's good stuff.
Okay, well, thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Thanks for the time.
Let's move on now to the next item. Uh, we have uh quotes here for a bobcat.
This is state bid pricing, uh, through Miller Selzer and quarter. Thousand in the budget spread between capital improvement and water. Uh, net price twenty-eight ninety-eight six, recommending approval of that.
All right, is there a motion? A second.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carried. Uh, next thing, we have a resignation from the uh. Police Department, uh, regretfully Jonathan is going to be moving on from working. Uh, with our department and I stink Jonathan, though, for the time he's spent with our department, he's been a valuable uh member. So is there a motion to uh approve and accept resignation?
So move.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no motion carried. You have anything else you need to do that, like?
No, we're already posting for it, posting for it for.
Okay, that's somebody's thoughts.
We have one application that we just received, we're gonna vet that out a little bit.
Yeah. Move on, the next item, we have a request for satisfaction here on a home rehab loan for Lebans. This is a. Been around a while.
Been around for a while. I think in my time here, we we've chosen to forgive two of these, this uh. Slaton Housing Rehabilitation Program. So this was something different than. Uh, small cities, this create small cities at one save the funding originally completed. Um, you can see the terms on the note there, it does say. Uh, number five, event homeowner guy is declared illegal incompetent or loses income above describes real estate by reason blah blah blah. She'll become due and payable within thirty days of the sale, gift or transfer. Uh, binds himself, his heirs, ex-executor, or assigns to the terms and conditions here. So. Uh, terms are pretty clear there, however, we have chosen to uh. Forgive and satisfy issue satisfactions for these. I believe two times him him uh fairly recent. So it's like to this uh. Gentleman recently deceased and family is looking at buttoning up the. Yeah. Take care of.
You know, how many more are these offered still? I mean, you know, it.
You know, I have never been able to find any, everything I have back here is is small cities, like I have nothing, I won't find any of these hundred. Things, I don't know, a separate organization help us out with that, like the equivalent of a housing partnership come themselves or something, but. I don't know the answer to that.
What was the original? Like intent or the original spirit of this program?
Exactly like small cities, uh. Heating, windows, doors, rules, you know, kind of the bones of the house, that's it.
Button safety, that's like the thing they call.
To meet federal and local structure plumbing and electrical code and.
So where would would this s- supposed to end up? Like how? You you. I I can't imagine you don't just make out. Something like this saying payable, um. Even if it is. Forty whatever years ago.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the intent. Was for this to come back to the city, or what was the intent of this?
That was the, that is the intent. But they never, they were never payable, you know what I mean? So there was. Just like small cities, like commercial or rental. It's a certain split, some is payable, some is not, or occupying. Um, most of those, if you're income qualified, are, you know, ten year, you have a mortgage, ten years, ten is given every year. Those type of terms are specified.
Well, in paragraph two, you know, it said that if they could they transfer the point, so otherwise divestments, most of the, you know, the words they give the land in eighty-one and. Friends sold it in eighty-five, then this says that they should repay. Yeah, I get the question is, is it ever intended to run repay or is it just a, you know, a? You know, I mean.
I don't think they tend whatever that's actually repaid unless one of these life. Events happen, they sell property, they pass away.
I thought that, though, it's. Actually, one of them, life events is going.
Right.
Right.
So it just blows my mind that. It set it up a lot differently to where it was. There had to have been some sort of a. For term or intent or, you know. Well, I it just blows my mind that that it's like this. You know, and the the other interesting part about this particular situation is. Um, this, the house has been gone for a very long time. You know, this is not the house that he was living, you know, I think more.
Mm-hmm.
But I mean.
So then wait here.
This isn't even the property address yet, then?
This is a lot that is right behind Ray Che's that only has a garage.
No, 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 that was uh, that was Cook's.
So this is where his house currently is, so he tore the house down.
Oh, no, you are right. Yep, he built that Cook's.
Well, that's. I was, so. Had he sold that lot off that just had a garage on it, this would have. Came up a long time ago, but.
Yes.
Yeah, the house, the house and the work that was done isn't even there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I I kind of shared your thoughts on that a little bit, it just seems like.
Yeah, this is, I was, you know, very, I was very.
That's how many are out there, you were going to record on, they come up when something like happens and people are. You know, doing a title examination of property, moving things out, you know.
Got Chai Bu, the population, we search of all the. titles I followed with the only way.
I don't know, my. When I first read this or was reading through this, my inclination was a heart and spirit of this was. This is essentially free money that you could have until. Something happens, even if it's forty years later, and then. Like in this particular situation, it's. It just comes off of the.
Like a deferred statement.
Age, and it should be. That was what my.
Mm-hmm. I've never seen one of these.
I've never, that I remember, I've never.
I don't think I've ever incorporated the actual note in the package, but I know. We've got to. The discussion being, you know, there's not really a dedicated. Fund, so to speak, that has that deferred to the. I am relatively certain that it's not even a deferred revenue or audit, like I don't, I don't.
Yeah, real place for it to cope.
No, no, it's just, and that's just a simple. Case because it's. They're not track.
Right.
You know, they're not fully accounting for. You know, the spot. In my opinion, if it was something that was doing payable, it would. It would go into our revolving loan fund, like you think. Same.
You know, the note is with the city of Slaton and now the E D A, now the city of Slaton could certainly. You know. Make a motion and throttle that to the E D A. Or uh, wait. The housing fund, even small cities, that's a whole set.
The E D A didn't exist yet. For his time.
I don't even think the statutory program.
No, I've already been there, that was, I think, I think during the United or something like when this. That was enabled.
So, um, we can chew on this one too, it's not a, you know, they're not looking to sell off property tomorrow, or there's not a scheduled quote or anything, they just, you know, their line passed away and they're just gonna.
Yeah, I could totally see that.
I mean, I I kind of felt like you, you like through spots too, but. Given that the two prior similar situations were handled in a manner of. Suggestion of just forgiving it, you know, like issue of satisfaction. I don't know if you, you know, should be treating this one differently than.
Agree.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, yeah.
If we, if we have precedents, we should stay with it. And I mean. Especially given how old this is.
Do. I would love, so if you, do you have the information of the previous to the?
Yeah, somewhere in the, did you a minute search and it's all searchable, P D apps that I got, so yeah.
I'd be curious if it was absolutely identified, certain.
I'm pretty certain they are, because I remember the Slaton Housing Rehabilitation Program, I remember that type of of the program.
So do do on the, I can certainly.
I.
I, or do you want to table it?
I'd, I'd like to table this. I'd all, I'd like to know about the previous to that is potentially. Precedence, and I'd also really love to know if there was any sort of. Establishment or documentation about the original spirit of what this was supposed to be.
Mm-hmm.
And if this truly was. Money that flowed to do good and then once it was done, it came back. To do more good, so to speak, I'd like some more information on those respects.
Okay.
I can definitely give you the first, I mean, I have no guarantees.
Nah, I understand, that's.
When you're thumbing through a few files, maybe.
Yeah, this is free, probably free electronic any records. Yeah, but, all right, so that one's tabled, uh, we'll move on then to, uh, we have a list. The certified, the delinquent utilities, and I don't know if I've ever seen a list this short before.
Has it gotten shorter since you printed this in?
Oh, yeah, uh, no. See, that's right, yeah.
Um, yes, thank you.
Yeah, this, I think in in all of my decades here, this is the shortest list I've ever seen. That's, that's a neat thing.
It is.
What's the motion?
A motion to uh move this to certify it for the uh assessed per taxes, so. Second, okay, we got a first and a second over here, any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carried. Uh, we need to call for a uh public hearing for our fee ordinance update and uh. It will be uh at our next meeting, which is December fifteenth, not, not.
Not nine.
Not nine. Is there a motion to do so?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any further?
I remember you made all the decisions on.
Yeah.
Everything else, though, and some of the other stuff, or?
Yeah, I think staff on, you know, Krista and Weston and Jeremy and, yeah, it's, it's. Yeah, it's just without a pulse for a public hearing.
Okay.
So that encompasses absolutely everything.
Oh, yeah, I was telling you, rent, the payroll, water, schedule, everything.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carried.
I will send that draft out to council for your. Results so that you.
I had to title.
Hearing and go, I want to agree with this.
Type that last. This is what it was.
Yes, and I did attract changes, and so I'll have a strike through and then. Nice.
Okay, uh, four more things here, we have an audit engagement letter, so.
This is just saying that we need to have the engaging with K D M Jacobson C P A for our twenty-five five off.
All right.
Like the motion to get Uber and gauge or whatever the.
Except.
Open.
Is it, is there a second?
Right.
And we will point an order, Chris will understand. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Right.
Oppose no, motion carried. We'll move on then to our last item. We have a request for uh. And we have the specification for the bids there at the Senior Center. H V.
Documents that you have in front of you are the form uh to be used, um. With all the applicable pieces of information that we want and kind of just using. What we've done before and statutes uh with this amount, um. And then got some help on the spec of work. With a local plumber to get the zones and have a spec workout of what we. Um, want, and so like to take those. I want to call it a bid, it's not legally a bid, we. Fully intended to be less than, or fully expected to be less than a hundred and seventy-five thousand, um. Could be fully within that twenty-five, the hundred and seventy-five, so. Need to get. Poses, quotes, whatever you want to call them, um. And then take it from there, but I'd like to take it through the. End of the day on the fifteenth, which is our our next meeting date, and then we'll go put them at that, at that meeting.
Sure, then we can award at that meeting.
Yes, sir.
If there's no questions, we have a motion.
So move.
A second?
Okay.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carried. Sure. Like abstain, makes sense. Okay, motion carried. If no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned eighteen forty-nine. Thanks, everyone.